It is November eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call this meeting to order. It is nine, nine oh two. So, welcome, everyone. Um, we'll begin the meeting with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Debbie Garrett of Open Door Homeless Resource Center. We ask folks who are with us if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation, followed again by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Most gracious Father, we come now to say thank you for watching over us last night and allowing us to arise this morning, fully clothed and in our right minds and with health and strength. Father, today we lift up to you our Mayor Brandon Whipple and the City Council leaders of Wichita. It is our prayer that they work together with all integrity and transparency as they serve the communities they each represent. Lord, search their hearts and remove all bitterness, resentment, prejudice, and racism from them so that they may effectively serve this city. Bless and protect their families from all evil. Father, we lift up to you our new Police Chief Joseph Sullivan and his family, our police officers, firefighters, and other frontline workers and their families as they put their own lives on the line to help keep our city safe. Father, we know that only you have all power in heaven and, and earth and underneath the earth. You are omniscient and omnipresent, all-knowing and everywhere. Send your warning angels to stand at the gates of this city to protect our children and youth, our seniors, those struggling with mental illness and the homeless in our communities, in Jesus's mighty name. And in closing, Ecclesiastes nine eleven says, "I ha- I have observed something else under the sun. The fastest runner doesn't always win the race, and the strongest warrior doesn't always win the battle. The wise sometimes go hungry and the skilled are not necessarily wealthy, and those who are educated don't always lead successful lives. It is all decided by chance, by being in the right place at the right time." Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion of said minutes, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive sixty-eight votes? That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamations, National Apprenticeship Week.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for National Apprenticeship Week, please make way to the front. All right, and again, um, if you are someone new to the process, feel free to come to the front or even into this space if you want to take pictures. Uh, that's completely appropriate. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in eighteen seventy. Whereas, the continued growth of a strong Kansas economy depends on a highly trained and agile workforce. And whereas, registered apprenticeships is an employer-driven, earn while you learn model that enables businesses to develop long-term, sustainable training programs that have immediate impact on increased productivity and improve the quality of their workforce. And whereas, registered apprenticeships allow industries to legitimize robust training programs that are developed directly from industry standards that face significant shortages of skilled workers. And whereas, registered apprenticeship allows Kansas workers to build rewarding and successful careers that the better, that better the quality of their lives and develop an enduring pipeline of talent critical to the future of Kansas. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of November fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, as National Apprenticeship Week, in the City of Wichita, and encourage the use of the registered apprenticeship program as a means of supporting a robust workforce and business environment.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Whipple and City Council. I am Keith Lawing, CEO and President of the Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas. And we just, on behalf of our board and our greater partners in the registered apprenticeship space, want to thank the city for their support and their partnership. And just real quickly, we are represented here today by some outstanding organizations. A lot of work in the registered apprenticeship space. Uh, we've just opened a brand-new training facility, the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. Uh, we have our electrical training providers, uh, that are putting electricians out on the street, both in union and non-union occupations. Uh, we have the first registered apprenticeship in the state of Kansas here in our area in information technology. So, we're entering new areas, uh, with job and job creation. And we're also pleased to recognize Spirit Aero Systems, which, uh, uh, was awarded a governor, uh, got a governor, an award from the governor of Kansas here, excuse me, uh, for the great work they are doing in expanding registered apprenticeship in their workforce. So, on behalf of all of our partners, thank you very much for this recognition.
Madam Clerk.
National Runaway Prevention Month.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for National Runaway Prevention Month, please make way to the front. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in eighteen seventy. Whereas, National Runaway Prevention Month began in two thousand two as a, and is presented each year by the National Runaways Safe Line, the federally designated national crisis and communication system for youth ages twelve to twenty-one who have run away, are considering leaving home, or are experiencing homelessness. And whereas, runaway youth are often expelled from their home, have experienced trauma, struggle to meet basic needs, and are at increased danger of falling into the high-risk situations, including human trafficking. And whereas, Wichita Children's Home is working to raise awareness, provide support, and offer resources for vulnerable young people in the community. And whereas, runaway and homeless youth should be provided with resources to he- to get help and safely. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand twenty-two as National Runaway Prevention Month, in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to become educated about runaway and homeless youth issues and available resources.
Thank you, Mayor Whipple and the City of Wichita, for recognizing that November is National Runaway Prevention Month, and thank you for supporting the work that we do at the Children's Home.
Madam Clerk.
National Veterans Small Business Week.
All right, so if you're here for National Veterans Small Business Week proclamation, please make way to the front. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in eighteen seventy. Whereas, nearly one out of ten small businesses across the United States are veteran-owned. From main street storefronts to virtual high-tech startups that advance America, veteran-owned small businesses are a pillar of our economy and contribute to the foundation of our nation. And whereas, veteran small business owners are resilient, disciplined, and mission-oriented, thanks to their military service and combine, and combined to serving our country and communities. And whereas, when we resolve ourselves to strengthen our communities, we must empower and support the giants that veteran entrepreneurs are in our economy. And whereas, National Veterans Small Business Week highlights the programs and services available to veteran entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and Resource Partners. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim October thirty-first through November fourth, two thousand twenty-two, as National Veterans Small Business Week, in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to support and join in this national effort to help Americans, veterans-owned small businesses start, grow, and recover their businesses after a disaster, after a disaster, and help our communities thrive.
Good morning. I'm Wayne Bell, District Director with the U.S. Small Business Administration, and it's my honor to be here today in observance of National Veterans Small Business Week. I'd like to thank Mayor Brandon Whipple, uh, as well as the other members of City Council. Certainly like to acknowledge, uh, also the City Manager. National Veterans Small Business Week gives us an opportunity to recognize the more than fifteen thousand veteran-owned small businesses statewide. Uh, they also represent over seven percent of the businesses throughout, uh, the state and approximately about six percent of the entire workforce, private sector workforce around the state. Last week, we had a notable announcement from SBA's Administrator Isabella Guzman, and it was, uh, the new veteran small business certification, uh, process that's going to be stood up in January where veterans could apply for veteran, uh, small business certification status in their pursuits of federal contracts. So, we're looking forward to that portal being, uh, stood up and looking forward to working with the veterans around, uh, the state. Locally, we work with directly anywhere from about three hundred to about four hundred veteran-owned businesses or veterans who are looking to go into business each year. We do, we do that through a host of trainings, workshops, and things that we do on post and off post, also with our SBA resource partners. It's a neat opportunity, again, to engage and work and help with these service members and veterans that have also provided, uh, great service, uh, through their military careers, uh, to our country. I'd like to, uh, also invite now a local veteran-owned small business, a veteran business owner, John Maida, owner of Laminage Products, Inc. Uh, John was on a panel with us last week. Uh, he and a few other business owners got to just share their stories, explain, uh, their paths in business, and it was neat to learn a bit more about his story. So, I'm going to invite John up to talk a bit.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor Whipple and Council. John Maida, President and CEO of Laminage Products, Inc. We have a little DBA called Laminage in Delano. We're probably the most innovative frame shop in the country, right here in Little O, Wichita, Kansas. We take images and as an alternative to framing, mount them on a board, they're washable, they're non-glare, they're UV-protected. Um, we are also a traditional frame shop, so imagination is the limit with what we do. I spent ten years in the Air Force, ended up in Wichita, Kansas, from, I think we spent seven years here, and decided that we wanted to do something on our own. So, we started, um, got with SBA to help us purchase a, a building and remodel, and the rest is history. That's, I thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Beth Rush, sidewalks.
All right, so we're gonna go into our public forum part of the agenda. Uh, Ms. Rush, uh, I'm not sure if you've been here before or not, but we have a timer on the bottom. Please try to stay within that time if you go over a little bit. Um, I might do one of these. That just means, uh, try to finish up your thought. Uh, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Beth Rush, and I live in District Three, Mead Neighborhood, and my address is twenty-two twenty, South Volusia. I spoke in June regarding sidewalk repair within our neighborhood. Um, I'm back again. Um, the project, they did start our new sidewalks in October, um, but they're not completed yet. I have sent some pictures around. Um, the sides of the sidewalk, they have not filled those in yet, and we have neighbors that walk in our neighborhood. They're disabled, use the walkers and those kind of things, and so, um, it's very unsafe in our neighborhood for many reasons. Um, I have been working with, um, Mike Armour, the city engineer, and have called him several times and asked him, um, does he know maybe when they're going to come back out? And I will quote him. Um, he said, "It could be sixty-five years, or it may be six months." Not a real good answer for me. Um, so, um, I'm hoping that maybe we can get a resolution to this a little bit quicker than that. Um, there were nails in the street, in the driveways. Uh, they started the project at six in the morning. They were blocking people in. You know, um, our neighbors were very frustrated about all this. It's just a thing where maybe we should work together better with the contractors to kind of help through this process. Um, as homeowners, we've asked for maybe some fundings. This area is low income and on a fixed income. And just recently, there was an approval of a park for five hundred thousand dollars, and part of that was for sidewalk repair in there. Um, if that can be a sidewalk repair for that park, there hopefully could be some resolution, either some grants or something, I would think, maybe to help other areas of the neighborhood. We're just asking, maybe if you could, um, revisit the ordinance? Um, I have been in contact with a state representative to maybe work together with you guys to maybe see if we could revisit that whole process of looking at that, to maybe look to see if we can look at that. I know sidewalks are a big issue within this whole, um, Wichita in general, and I would be willing to help do whatever it is. But the frustration in our neighborhood recently was not a good one, and I hope that we can get this resolved. The one area is near, um, Mead Middle School, and that was very unsafe. There was a crosswalk there, and we're still, it's still not fixed, and I'm just hoping that maybe we can get a resolution for that.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for your time.
Of course. Thank you, and it's an issue that we've had discussion on, so I know it's something we're looking into. Uh, so hopefully we'll, uh, have some, some, some updates, uh, for you. Uh, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Beth, I, break me if I'm wrong. I believe, um, I did talk to Mike Armour, and I think the contractor's going to be out by the end of this week? Was it this week or next week?
Um, I have not had an email or anything from Mr. Armour at all, um, or any response from anybody, so I, I, I can't answer that.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that. I believe the contractor will be out by the end of this week.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items One through twenty.
All right, is, uh, every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion in the consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive five yay votes? That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated November seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lawver, Department of Finance. For November seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the board of bids are as follows. We have for engineering, the two thousand twenty-two outsourced crosswalk pavement markings maintenance. For traffic control services incorporated, for an aggregate bid total of two hundred and eighty-two thousand ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents, awarded to the engineer's estimate of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. For purchasing, we have the nineteen thousand gross vehicle weight four-wheel-drive exterior cab and chassis with service bed for Rustiak Ford Incorporated in an amount of one hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We have meters, replacement parts, and Itron E R T S for Midwest Meter Incorporated for Groups One, Two, Four, for one million one hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars. For Schultz Supply Incorporated for Group Three, for three hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. We have trailer-mounted tree spade for Big John Manufacturing for sixty-one thousand. And we have fire hydrants for Core and Main LP for one hundred and forty-one thousand twenty dollars and sixty-five cents. And we have Phase One Environmental Site Assessment for Spectrum Environmental Incorporated for seventy-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals out on the street, and I would recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
All right, is there any questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Back to discussion, back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action, to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive sixty-eight votes? That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The petitions for your consideration today include signatures that represent a hundred percent of each improvement district and are valid per Kansas statute. Town Park Ninth Edition is in District Two, includes new petitions for water, sewer, and paving improvements. In September of two thousand twenty-two, City Council approved sewer improvements to serve Northgate Sixth Edition, which is in District Six. The developer since submitted revised petition with revised budget to reflect current market conditions. Staff recommends City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Now, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Well done. Input from the public on this item? There's no input, we'll bring discussion back to the bench, further discussion on this item. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive sixty-eight votes? That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Water and sewer rate fee adjustments for two thousand twenty-three.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council, Penny Feis, Hookworks Utilities, bringing back
Bringing back this unfinished business item from October eighteenth. Um, just as a brief reminder, uh, city staff brings forward, um, rate adjustment recommendations annually for City Council consideration, and this year we also completed a cost of service analysis um, to ensure that we were meeting, um, our customer class requirements. We shared these results with City Council in August. Um, at that time, we also had our consultant review our fee methodology, um, and they concurred with the process that we used. Uh, we presented our, our first recommended rate adjustments on October eighteenth. Uh, the item was deferred to today so that we could, um, take into considerations from recommendations, uh, from City Council regarding customer assistance. Uh, the reason that we need rate adjustments is to ensure that we have proper revenue uh, to cover the ongoing maintenance operation of the utility, as well as needed capital improvements. Um, we're all very aware of very two large projects that we have ongoing right now, the Northwest Water Facility, um, and then our biological nutrient removal process, uh, project. And then we also have, um, about five-hundred-million more projects in the CIP over the next ten years. Uh, rate adjustments also help us meet our financial metrics so that the utility stays in good financial health. Fee adjustments are something that we don't do on an annual basis. We last did these in two thousand and nineteen, and these are only charged when someone, um, has a specific service, like if they open an account or have a meter change out. This is the, uh, revenue adjustment projection that we've shared with City Council. Since two thousand and nineteen, there hasn't been any change since that time. For the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, the water, uh, recommended adjustment would be six-point-two-five percent, and the sewer adjustment would be three percent, for a total combined of four-point-nine-five percent. So we're gonna spend a little bit more time talking about, uh, this slide than we did last time. It's also been updated, um, with information through September. I'm gonna take you back to two thousand and sixteen because that's when we dedicated, uh, point-one percent of the rate adjustment to customer assistance, and that really increased the amount of funding we had available for those programs. The Center of Hope administers, um, what we call our H-two-O, or Help to Others Program. And, um, so it's funded by the city, administered by them, um, and they have done that for even before two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and nineteen, we realized that we were not expending the funds that we had available, so city staff proposed the rate relief program, which, um, is administered by Public Works and Utilities. And because we don't have any staff to do income determination, we use a proxy eligibility process, which means if you can demonstrate eligibility for a different program, in this case, low-income energy assistance, um, you can qualify for our program. So you'll see that beginning in two thousand and nineteen. And then, um, in two thousand and twenty-one, we had additional assistance programs become available from COVID-nineteen relief funds. So, um, these amounts are much larger, um, but we also know that these are temporary. Those are the Wichita Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which was administered by housing. Um, the funding for that has since been exhausted, and then that's the Emergency Water Assistance Program, which is administered by the state and is still ongoing. So realizing that these, uh, two forms of assistance, um, have or will end, um, we're proposing, uh, the, um, kind of a, a program to bridge the gap for two thousand and twenty-three only. And this is based on a couple of things that we heard from the City Council discussion last time. Um, one would be a thirty-six-dollar credit, um, that would be automatically applied to water accounts that receive assistance from either the Wichita Emergency Rental Assistance Program in two thousand and twenty-two or the Help to Others Program. And really, you know, the utility has a limited amount of information available to it as far as, you know, what, um, income someone has. So these are the two lists that are available to us. And then the other would be to extend the application period for the two thousand and twenty-three rate relief, rate relief program. So how did we get thirty-six dollars? Um, a low-water user, um, if the recommended rate increase is approved, would have an annualized rate impact of about twenty-eight dollars. A mid-level water user would have an annualized rate impact of about forty-two dollars. So thirty-six dollars would cover the impact for all low-water users and some mid-water users. Um, based on who we know has participated in We Wrap an H-two-O to date, this would impact about fifteen-hundred households. That number will increase because the H-two-O program is ongoing through the end of the year. What do these households look like? Um, to be eligible for We Wrap, the household had to demonstrate an income less than eighty percent of the area median income. They had to have passed due rent utilities and be at risk of eviction disconnection, and they had to demonstrate a COVID-nineteen-related economic impact. These were about twelve-hundred households. Um, to receive H-two-O, the household has to demonstrate an income below one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent of median household income for the area, and through September, this totals three-hundred-and-seventy-one households. We eliminated duplicates and arrived at one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-seven households. The second piece would be to extend our rate relief program. Typically, we wait until October to make sure we have funds available. We know we have funds available, um, from underspending in previous years. So next year, we could begin the application period earlier in April. Um, I think there's been a lot more social media interaction with our rate relief program right now, so people are understanding that if they are eligible for low-income energy assistance, they can be eligible for our program. Um, traditionally, leave becomes available in January, so people can know that now. They can apply in January through March of next year, and then our application period can run from April forward. Um, I think we have pretty good numbers as far as participation, um, in our rate relief program. Seeing as how it's only operated for three months of the year, um, you can see last year we had more than four-hundred customers who were helped. So how do we pay for all of this? Um, I mentioned that point-one percent rate increase that was dedicated back in two thousand and sixteen. That's, uh, projected to generate one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars in two thousand and twenty-three. We can pull forward underspending from previous years, and that would give us a total of three-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy dollars. We could dedicate sixty thousand to customer assistance, the thirty-six-dollar automatic credit, seventy-five thousand to rate relief, um, eight-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy for the Center of Hope, and still have a hundred thousand dollars for our rebate program. This is a chart, um, that you saw at the previous presentation, demonstrating the impact of the rate adjustment. And staff's recommendation would be to approve recommended rate and fee adjustments, place ordinance on first reading, authorize necessary budget adjustments to accommodate the customer assistance program, and authorize necessary signatures. Answering any questions?
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Um, thank you for the presentation, um, and for all your work. Uh, this is a great thing to, to try and offer more relief for struggling people out there. Um, I just wanna ask, are we going to make sure on the thirty-six-dollar rebate that, to let them know that it's a one-time thing, so that way they don't expect to have it further on during the year?
Yeah, and we can put that notification, um, on the bill. We can send them a separate notification. We have, um, a way to do that, we can.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Further questions for staff?
I do just want to take a moment to thank you for, uh, going through this with such, such success on trying to, uh, uh, meet the will of the council when it comes to, uh, our attempts to hold particularly the, the most vulnerable folks in our community harmless for, uh, this rate increase as we see, uh, uh, more inflation and more, uh, uh, we haven't had the sales tax really, uh, relief on food yet. We know that's more expensive now than ever to be a cans-in, and just having this little bit of relief might not seem like a lot to a lot of people, uh, but i- it's going to really be helpful for those who, who need it. So I do just wanna thank you and your staff for being able to, uh, come up with a, a way in which we could provide relief. I know it's not easy and it was extra work for you guys, uh, but I really appreciate, uh, uh, the, the end result here. I, I think it's a, a, a very good path forward, so thank you.
All right, no further questions for staff? Uh, is there input from the public on this item? All right, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion? I recognize Councilmember Hoheisel for her motion since she spoke to it. I'm trying to hog all the motions.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I recommend that the City Council approve the recommended rate and fee adjustments, place ordinances on first reading, authorize the necessary budget adjustments to accommodate the customer assistance program, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received six yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and amending resolution for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds, Advanced Catastrophe Technologies LLC.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Tim Goodpast, here with the city's Development Services Division of the City Manager's Office. The item before you today is a request to amend the letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Advanced Catastrophe Technologies. Advanced Catastrophe Technologies Incorporated, or ACT, was formed in two thousand and one to provide disaster mitigation and reconstruction services. So this is to repair fire damage, or for instance, if a pipe froze in a building and caused damage, they would come in and repair it and, and replace whatever was damaged. They target industries that include commercial and retail development companies, hospitality and student housing, owners of hotel systems, and healthcare systems and senior living systems. They have a network of five-hundred contractors nationwide to provide service. On June second of two thousand and twenty, uh, the company was approved for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed two-million-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand. This was for the construction of a new, uh, corporate headquarters for ACT, which they did build, uh, a twenty-thousand-square-foot headquarters near Hoover and K-96. Uh, the, uh, they expanded the scope of the project, which increased the cost as well as issues with the supply chain during construction. Therefore, the company is requesting an amendment to the letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to increase the amount to four-million-eight-hundred-thousand to cover the increased costs. This is the location where they constructed their headquarters. That is Hoover Road, uh, running from top to bottom on the left side, and obviously you can see K-96 running through the middle of the aerial. The bonds will have provided a sales tax exemption on construction materials and a ten-year property tax abatement on a five-plus-five-year basis. There is no property tax abatement for the land. Additionally, the original letter of intent was issued to Advanced Catastrophe Technologies Incorporated, the incorporated being the important part here. The company was recently acquired by Cotton Holdings, based in Dallas, Texas, which acquired all of the assets of Advanced Catastrophe Technologies through a legal entity it established, which is Advanced Catastrophe Technologies LLC, or Limited Liability Corporation. Therefore, the city needs to assign the letter of intent to Advanced Catastrophe Technologies LLC as well. Advanced Catastrophe Technologies currently has forty-six employees nationwide and projects it will add ten new employees in Wichita in the next five years with average annual wages of forty-four-thousand-four-hundred a year. Based on its job creation, capital investment, and the use of state incentives, the company qualifies for an eighty percent property tax abatement. The estimated value of an eighty percent property tax abatement based on the increased value of the letter of intent is approximately a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars a year, uh, the city's share of which is approximately thirty-one-thousand dollars a year. An updated, uh, cost-benefit analysis from the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University shows an overall ratio of benefits to costs of one-point-three-one-to-one for the city, one-point-two-one-to-one for the city's, uh, general fund, and one-point-five-five-to-one for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Brandon Finley is here on behalf of Advanced Catastrophe Technologies and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Is there questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench, further discussion. If there's no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Frye, as this resides in District Five.
Thank you, sir. Um, I would just like to thank Advanced Catastrophe Technologies for deciding to make their corporate headquarters in Wichita. We need more corporate headquarters doing business all across the country in Wichita, so thank you for that investment. It's a beautiful facility, and, uh, that industrial park is starting to see more tenants, so they were the first, and let's hope for many more. With that, um, I make a motion that City Council close the public hearing, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. I've received six yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Environmental Laboratory Services.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of Wichita City Council. Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. Um, the item before you this morning is a recommendation to approve, uh, two contracts for environmental laboratory services. Uh, the city utili- utilizes outside firms to provide, um, lab services for testing of groundwater, surface water, stormwater runoff, um, some aspects of our sewage treatment division, industrial wastewater, soils, sediments, biosolids, and air. Um, the analyses are utilized by multiple operating divisions, uh, within the organization, including wastewater treatment, um, stormwater management, environmental health, and airport engineering division. The services are provided to meet, uh, regulatory requirements under, um, a number of monitoring permits as well as projects that are al- also overseen by state and federal agencies. Um, a little bit of highlight on the procurement, um, piece of this. Three proposals were received. Two of the vendors, uh, were selected for interview. One of the vendors did not meet the, uh, screening, um, criteria. Pace Analytical Services and Meridian Analytical Labs were both selected, and each vendor provides a uniform schedule of fees, has the capacity to perform the required work, and the ability to collect the samples, um, um, at the city's discretion. Um, use of the two firms, uh, meets, uh, both needs in terms of cost and scheduling for the varied work across the divisions. Um, each contract amount is not to exceed two-hundred-thousand dollars annually, and funds for these services are included in the, uh, annual operating budgets of each division. And, uh, the contract term is for two years with up to three one-year extensions for each contract. And with that, I'd like to provide staff's recommendation to approve the contracts for lab services with the selected vendors, Pace Analytical Services and Meridian Analytical Labs, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Questions for staff? See none. There input from the public on this item? See none. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the laboratory services contract and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received six yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Banking Services Contract Approval.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Uh, today I want to go over our banking services contract and seek your approval of that. The, uh, city has very complex and diverse banking services needs. Uh, we have, uh, close to thirty bank accounts, uh, we make multiple deposits annually from multiple locations, about seventy-thousand deposits, uh, we write about thirty-thousand checks a year, and we process about a hundred-thousand ACH payments a year. In addition, our bank serves as our safekeeper for our investment portfolio, which approaches six-hundred-million dollars and which we trade each year, and we also have very significant collateralization, uh, requirements of our bank, so it's a relatively complex, uh, agreement. The city has used InTrust Bank, and our contract with InTrust expires on November thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two, and they have been our banking services provider since, uh, two thousand and three, I believe. Uh, so the city staff issued an RFP back in July, and we received four responses to that RFP. So we formed a staff screening and selection committee. That committee was composed of members from the Finance Department, the IT Department, City Manager's Office, Law Department, and Airport. The Staff Screening and Selection Committee reviewed the proposals and shortlisted to two banks, which were interviewed, uh, in, uh, early September. The Staff Screening and Selection Committee unanimously recommended InTrust Bank as the banking services provider for the city of Wichita going forward. InTrust is very experienced in commercial banking, and particularly in the space of serving large governmental accounts, of which we, of course, are one. InTrust has multiple locations in Wichita, which was attractive to the committee. They understand our complex banking needs, obviously, since they've served us for several years, and they also provided the lowest-cost proposal. Now, in addition, today to approving a vendor, there's something a little bit unique that we need to have you approve on banking services, and that is, the state statute requires a resolution that designates depositories of public funds, based on Chapter 9, I think. So there is also a resolution included in your material, and we would seek your approval of that resolution designating InTrust Bank as a depository of municipal funds. So the recommended action today, again, is approval of the Staff Screening and Selection Committee's recommendation to choose InTrust Bank as the banking services provider for the city of Wichita, and also to approve the resolution designating InTrust as a depository of city funds. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Input from the public on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract and resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. I've received six yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Workers' Compensation Medical Treatment Vendor Selection and Agreement.
Morning.
Morning, Mayor. City Council members. Veron Needens, Department of Finance. The item before you this morning, Workers' Compensation Medical Treatment Vendor Selection. City's workers' compensation program is self-funded and self-administered by staff. All workers' compensation benefits are defined and regulated by the state of Kansas Workers' Compensation Division per the Workers' Compensation Act. One of the requirements of this act is for employers to provide qualified medical treatment to injured employees. Very few medical providers in the area accept workers' compensation patients or specialize in industrial medicine on a large scale. Those that do generally provide diagnosis, treatment, referral to specialists, referral for testing, referral to physical therapy, and work status reports. Fees charged for these services are subject to the Kansas Division of Workers' Compensation Schedule and medical fees. The city's current medical provider's contract expires November 30th of this year. On April 22, staff issued an RFP requesting treatment services of the 18 notices sent to potential vendors. Two responses were received, and only one met the requirements of the RFP. Staff Screening and Selection Committee, including representatives from Fire and Police, reviewed the one qualified proposer, Via Christi Occupational and Environmental Medicine, the incumbent. The committee recommends Via Christi continue with occupational health services based on meeting the requirements of the RFP and demonstrating a solid history of quality past performance. Last year's clinic fees reached $115,000. Depending on frequency, severity, injury, and any changes to the Kansas fee schedule, 2023 fees are expected to be in the range of last year's as well. Staff recommends city council approve the selection of Via Christi Occupational and Environmental Medicine as the city's workers' compensation medical provider and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action, to accept the recommendations of the Staff Screening and Selection Committee, and approve the selection of Via Christi Occupational and Environmental Medicine as the city's workers' compensation medical treatment provider and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. I've received six yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Teamsters Transit Local 795 Memorandum of Agreement.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. City Council members. I'm Chris Bezrucki with the HR Department. For your consideration, is a tentative labor agreement between the city of Wichita and Teamsters Local Union 795. The proposed agreement is for three years and was approved by the Teamsters membership on October 23rd by a vote. And I want to walk you through the highlights of the changes and the improvements to the contract. So it is for three years. It'll begin effective in 2023. The agreement covers the 90 employees at the Wichita Transit Department, and the agreement's provisions will be incorporated into the revised budget. Some of the highlights and improvements are that the first year pay rates will be adjusted upward by 4%. The employees will also, the employees that have been working here for a year at the transit building, will also get an additional step increase in the range, so they'll be up to 6.5%. And then, based on merit, on their performance at their anniversary date, they'll be eligible for an additional 2.5%. So there could be some employees making 9% in the first year. Also, we are awarding them, that we have with other units, other employees, if they worked during the pandemic from March 20 to March 21, they will be given a $1,000 bonus for being an essential worker for us. In 2024, the pay adjustment will be 2%. They'll be eligible for a merit step as well, and same in 2025. Other things that we added was Juneteenth is now a paid holiday. We amended the contract for the term bus operator to bus and van operators, and we amended the contract to understand when a bus is overheated during the summertime and whatnot. And then we increased the tool allowance for mechanics to address new maintenance requirements for electrical buses, since that was kind of new. So with that, we'd recommend you approve the contract.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none? We're bringing discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the proposed 2023-2025 memorandum of agreement between the Teamsters Union Local 795 and the city of Wichita and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. I've received six yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Overnaming of Volusia Avenue adjacent to Tabernacle Bible Church.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Brooke Couchock, AmeriCorps member, serving in the City Manager's Office, here to speak on the overnaming of Volusia Avenue adjacent to Tabernacle Bible Church, District 1. Some background. In August 2022, the city received a request to honor Pastor Lincoln Montgomery's contributions, service, and commitment to Tabernacle Bible Church, the church without walls and neighboring communities. Pastor Lincoln Montgomery served for 35 years, over half of the church's historical presence at the corner of 17th Street and Volusia Avenue. Pastor Montgomery transformed the church's meaningful outreach, spiritual renewal, and discipleship efforts beyond the confines of the church building. Some of the Pastor Lincoln Montgomery's contributions include, but are not limited to, volunteering Tabernacle Bible Church to be a COVID-19 vaccination site and working with trusted community health professionals to provide accurate information as it related to the pandemic. Additionally, Tabernacle Bible Church adopted several magnet schools in northeast Wichita, providing school supplies, teacher support, and classroom volunteers. The church without walls also partnered with United Methodist Open Door Ministry to feed the community. Additionally, Pastor Lincoln Montgomery assisted with residential cleanups and home repairs, spearheaded a tutoring program for youth at the church, then expanded to the nearby football team, hosted Vacation Bible School, and established a prison ministry and a college ministry for WSU students. Pastor Lincoln Montgomery helped coordinate rides and a meal for students. Pastor Montgomery leaves a legacy of building a community of people. Here's the location of the proposed overnaming on the corners of 18th Street and 17th Street intersecting Volusia Avenue. City Council Policy 13 requires the overnaming honor the legacy of a distinguished citizen, relates to the person being honored in some meaningful way, and mandates a naming advisory committee. The portion of Volusia Avenue to be overnamed is adjacent to Tabernacle Bible Church, the church without walls, and the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board meets policy requirements. On October 4th, 22, the city council designated the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board, DI-Crab, as the naming advisory committee for this request. On October 18th, the DI-Crab reviewed the proposal and recommended the overnaming of Volusia Avenue for L.E. Montgomery. The timeline is below. Financial considerations: It is estimated that the cost to fabricate and install the signs will be approximately $200. The action of the overnaming is consistent with City Council Policy 13. And it is recommended that the city council approve the request for overnaming of a portion of Volusia Avenue to honor Pastor Lincoln Montgomery and authorize the installation of two sign blades labeled "L.E. Montgomery Avenue" at each end of the overnamed portion of Volusia Avenue. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, I will just say thank you to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board for taking this task on. Thank you to Burke for taking this on as well. Just really good opportunity for us to, again, honor leaders within our community, and I happily make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the request for overnaming of a portion of Volusia Avenue to honor Pastor Lincoln Montgomery and authorize the installation of two sign blades labeled "L.E. Montgomery Avenue" at each end of the overnaming portion of Volusia Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. I've received six yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Zone 2022-33. Zone change request from SF5 Single Family Residential to TF3 Two-Family Residential and LC Limited Commercial for redevelopment on property, generally located on the south side of West 21st Street North and on the west side of North 151st Street West.
Welcome.
Good morning. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today because this request has received valid protests against the application. The applicants are requesting rezoning to TF3 Two-Family Residential and LC Limited Commercial zoning. The applicants have indicated it's their intention to develop duplexes and/or single-family residences on the majority of the site and commercial uses at the northeast corner. Please note that this rezoning application was submitted when the property was in the unincorporated Cedric County, and the property has since been annexed by the city of Wichita. The property is located at the southwest corner of 21st Street and 151st Street. It is currently zoned RR Rule Residential and is developed as a farm with land in agricultural use. In terms of the context, the properties surrounding the subject site are in unincorporated Cedric County, and the majority are zoned Rule Residential and also in agricultural use. To the east and southeast are properties zoned Rule Residential and in use for large lot single-family residences. Properties to the northeast and east are zoned SF20 and in use for single-family residences and agricultural uses. To the west and north of the subject site, a property is owned by the Kansas Department of Transportation for future development as part of a freeway. In terms of the review, on July 21st, the Planning Commission considered this application and held a public hearing. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request unanimously 12 to 0, subject to the staff-recommended protective overlay. One member of the public spoke in opposition with general concerns of increases in density, traffic, and development being out of character with the surrounding area. On July 21st, the Citizen Advisory Board for the county considered the application and recommended approval 6 to 3, again, subject to the staff-protective overlay. No members of the public spoke in opposition. On September 7th, the Cedric County Board of County Commissioners considered the item and moved and voted to defer it pending the annexation. Last night, on November 7th, the District Advisory Board considered this application. The DAB recommended approval, subject to staff recommendations 6 to 2. Members of the public were present and spoke in opposition with concerns of impacts of the quality of life, configuration of access, increased taxes on surrounding properties. Several protest petitions were submitted in opposition to the request. A total of 34.13% of the protest area. This exceeds the minimum 20% threshold by the state. Therefore, in order to approve the zone change request, it would require a supermajority or six of seven votes. For council action, it is recommended that the city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the zone change request, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. Again, this would take six of seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can deny the zone change, which will require five of seven votes because it's an override of the Planning Commission, or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, which would require a simple majority, four of seven votes. Now, one brief note is that the city council policy is to hold public hearings for items at the Planning Commission and not to accept additional public comments at the city council meeting.
Which we never would.
With that, I'll take you through some of the images and graphics for the case. So here's the aerial. You can see the area indicated for TF3, which is the majority of the site, and also the corner for commercial use, limited commercial, in the northeast corner. This is the map of the current zoning, and you can see the red line to the west of the site is the Future Expressway, and property owned. A large portion of that is owned by K-Dot. This is from the comprehensive plan. It's identified for residential and employment growth. This is the graphic that was submitted by the applicants, showing a draft layout as well as the different uses for the various portions of the property. This is a map of the protest petitions that were received, the areas in red being valid protests, and you can see it's above the 20% threshold with 34%. These are photos from the site, so again, much of the land, the subject site is in agricultural use as well as much of the land surrounding it. And this is the hospital to the north and east of the subject site. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Further discussion from the bench? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Frye, as this resides in District 5.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation, Scott. And as you heard from Scott, this has been going on since June, when MAPC first heard it. We heard it last night at DAB, and there was some new information that didn't make your presentation, that plat being one of them. It's been updated since then, so I would like to defer this to December 6th, so I can have some more time to discuss those changes with area residents. So that would be my motion to defer action until December 6th and have it brought back to the council for hearing.
The motion is to defer till December 6th. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, so let's go. Sorry. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you. Would you, do you mean December 5th? Did I get my day wrong?
Yeah, we should double-check that. Let's not come in on a Wednesday.
December 6th is a Tuesday. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Motion has been made and then seconded. Is there further discussion on said motion? If there is not, we will request that the clerk opens the roll, so members may cast their vote. I've received six yea votes. That motion does pass. This item will return to us December 6th. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Mayor Whipple, Vice Mayor Tuttle, and Councilmembers Johnson, Hoheisel, Frye, and Ballard to attend the NLC Summit Conference, November 16th through 20th, 2022, in Kansas City, Kansas.
Opening it up to jokes?
Mr. Mayor, a very minor change, but it's actually Kansas City, Missouri.
Kansas City. Kansas City, Missouri. Is there further discussion? Oh, you guys. If there's no further discussion, then I will, yeah, do it.
I'd like to make the, take the action to council approve travel for Mayor Whipple, Vice Mayor Tuttle, Councilmembers Johnson, Hoheisel, Fry, and Ballard to attend the NLC Conference, November sixteenth through twentieth, 2022, in Kansas City, Missouri.
Does that make Councilmember Booba our designated survivor?
Survivor.
Survivor? Yikes. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded. Clerk roll up and roll. Members will cast their vote. I've received six yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right. Do we got any appointments we want to get out there? See none? Any comments? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Stephanie Merritt to the Farm and Food Council.
Councilmember, okay. There's any other appointments? If there's no other appointments, I'll make a motion to accept that appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received six yay votes. That motion does pass. We are back on announcements for the good of the body. Chair recognizes Councilmember Fry.
Remind everyone today is election day. If you haven't gone out and voted, please get up and do so. It is your right and it's your privilege.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Sorry. Thank you. I was going to make that comment, and then also just a reminder that this weekend we celebrate Veterans Day. I know we have many veterans on our staff who have served our country and appreciate their service, but to all the veterans in our community, we are grateful and thank them, and part of the reason we have the right to vote is because of so many great veterans in our nation. Thank you.
Further questions? Excuse me, not questions, further comments. If there is no further comments, now make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll up and roll. Members will cast their vote. I've received six yay votes. We are adjourned. See you all, not next week, but the following week. Thank you.